I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, December 2nd. Order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Bokey, do we have a youth council in the building?
We have a whole day of very sparse.
Okay. So it doesn't appear that we have anyone from the youth council to report tonight. It doesn't appear that we have anyone from the school district to report. So it appears everybody's late back from holiday, or early off, one of the two. So we now move to public comments. This is when any member of the public may speak to any item of interest to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on at 30 seconds as a warning, and the red light means your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as John Simpson, Lakewood, Washington. Person who has signed up is Mr. Dennis Havlin.
I'm from Lakewood, Washington. This is words from the forty-seventh President of the United States. That's my prediction.
Thank you guys so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here. I met a few of you guys earlier today. I always say it's such a blessing to be here. I think you guys are the real fighters in California. I tell people all the time, California is essentially a communist country within the United States of America. If you've been there, if you've been to downtown LA, you have been to a communist country, and it's getting crazier. I mean, I've never seen, especially San Francisco, I've never seen so many articles written about poop. I mean, it's just, is this real life? Every time you scroll, there's articles, you've got a real poop problem. There's poop on the streets. There's a poop patrol in San Francisco, which is quite remarkable. The people that are running these cities think that they're on the das, they can tell us that they are well equipped to run the country, right? They get to have a poop control. They tell us that we can't have a border patrol. I don't think that's how it works, right? By the way, thank you guys for being here tonight. I know that you sacrificed watching the Democrat debates tonight, right? I haven't looked at the news, but I can probably guess there's a lot of craziness going on. We've probably got Beto and Cory Booker speaking Spanish, because they have no idea they're running for president.
That's all the people who have signed up to speak at public comment, but wish, if you wish to speak at public comment, that doesn't preclude you. If you come up to the mic at this time, give me an opportunity. This is not the public hearing on 18A, which will be called later. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing done. Declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of November 12th, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of November 18th, 2019. C, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,461,621.86 for the period of October 16th, 2019 through November 15th, 2019. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,155,579.71 for the period of October 16th, 2019 through November 18th, 2019. E, motion number 2019-77, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Puget Paving and Construction, increasing project spending in the amount of $6,500 for the 2019 roadway patching project. F, motion number 2019-78, confirming the appointment of Philip Olbrecht as hearings examiner and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Philip Olbrecht in the amount of $155 per hour for hearings examiner services from January 1, 2020 through January 1, 2022. G, motion number 2019-79, reappointing Councilmember Mike Branstadter to serve on the Greater Tacoma Regional Convention Center Public Facilities District Board from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2024. H, resolution number 2019-22, establishing the 2020 docket of comprehensive planned land use zoning map and policy amendments. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk, I, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of September 9th, 2019. II, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of October 7th, 2019. And III, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 24th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I want to remove item H.
Item H is removed. Are there any others? Hearing done, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda less item H.
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item H. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We now move to item H, resolution number 2019-22. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2019-22, establishing the 2020 docket of comprehensive planned land use zoning map and policy amendments.
Will we consider amendments? I consider a motion.
Seconded.
Been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt resolution number 2019-22. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The action before us is to set the docket of comprehensive plan amendments that will be placed into consideration over, to be, where we'll be final action over the next, you know, probably about eight months from now, if the docket moves forward. But given the significance of the comprehensive plan, where there are a lot of actions of where being in accordance with a comprehensive plan is a consideration by hearing examiners and others, and it speaks, also speaks to the public about, you know, what our intents are in a policy way. I have four policy-related text amendments that I would like to propose be added to the docket to, for consideration and action in 2020. And...
Do you want to make that as a single motion?
And, Mr. Mayor, the staff has assisted me in by providing, after I'm the dais, a copy that's titled Resolution Number 2019-22 amended, and I would move to amend Resolution 2019-22 to read as noted in Resolution 2019-22 amended, that incorporates the four comprehensive plan text amendment actions that I have proposed.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion for amendment?
I'll second.
Been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we amend motion number 2019-22 to include four items to be docketed for consideration in the comprehensive plan, namely to LU 2.43, a deletion of T 18.4, a new T 18.6, and a new T 18.10, which you have before you. Is there further discussion? Branstadter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let me just briefly address each of the four. The land use amendment relates to the fact that over the, in the past two years, we of the council have moved forward as a way to increase density in the city by, with planned development districts. The comprehensive plan is sort of silent about the intent of planned development districts, and in what case those rules would apply. And while the docket already includes a change to the density table, that change comes with no explanation as to what it is for. And so this amendment, which is on page four of the amended document, merely notes that how we intend planned development, district development to be evaluated and under what conditions as a density strategy. The second change is that under freight mobility, we have a 20-year policy that says, examine the potential of unused or unutilized railroad in Lakewood for freight rail. We've actually, over the past five years, had a good number of discussions about freight rail, and our evaluation is, other than for the purposes that is already here, we don't want any more of it. So we're, and I worry that continuing to have a policy of examining the potential implies an opening, openness to more, and I don't think that's the case. The third amendment, which would be T 18.6, is an amendment to an additional policy also that relates to freight rail, and it really motes to state that not only are we looking at existing rail lines that serve Lakewood businesses, but that we're also open to continuing the freight lines that serve JBLM that are in the city. That specifically relates to the, specifically to the spur that runs along parallel to Forty-seventh Avenue from the main line on to McCord Field, and then on through into the main part of JBLM, down to the ammunition supply area. And then lastly, T 1810 is a, is a policy that is sort of where we've come to on freight rail, that is specifically saying, I mean, we have, we have announced that this, the policy of that we don't want any more freight rail unless it's very, very local. We don't want anything in the future to be freight trains moving through Lakewood, okay? And this establishes our policy. That would be in line with what we have said in legislative policy to our legislatures is our policy, and I'm just looking to clarify that by inserting it into the comprehensive plan. And again, I understand that what we're doing today is just putting these on the docket to be considered, and they'll be looked at by the planning commission, and the public will be able to consent them, and, you know, and like I said, sometime in the early second half of next year, we'll be, this whole docket will come back to us for our own consideration and final actions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question on LU 243. The encourage planned development district, and then it goes on to develop with higher residential densities. It was my understanding when we did the PDD ordinance that it didn't include all, you don't have to have all those items in there, or maybe I'm wrong. It was, I thought it was a checklist of things. It had a superior design, and so I'm a little, I read this as all. So I think it has the effect, but I think I'm going to need some help here if I'm looking at Mr. Buwer. I thought we had a checklist or something like that for the PDDs rather than this. This includes all the criteria in here.
It does. This is more or less a placeholder to have a further discussion about the intent of the PDD zone, and I tried to be all-inclusive so that there's greater, a level of broader language that the council can use to further refine this as we go through the public process before the planning commission and city council. These requests were received over the holiday period, and we're trying to quickly bring them forward for council review this evening. So this language most likely will get refined as we go through the public hearing process in 2020.
So, since the PDD is already in 18A?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to specifically call it out in the comprehensive plan, or do we just want to speak to density?
I'm, I am responding to a request by another city council member to have this as consideration for your 2019 docket, or 2020 docket. You may or may not, at the end of the process, wish to include this language, or have some other different language available.
Okay.
Mr. Whalen.
While we're on that proposed text amendment, the first comma needs to be wordsmithed out, otherwise the sentence makes little sense. Provided this type of development incorporates innovative site design, then the comma, comma, conservation, blah, blah, blah. So I have no problem with putting this forward to provide context with regard to the land use policy, that particular chapter on the PDD, so I'm fine with that. On the other two, the CPA 2020-11 and 2020-12, again, I've had about five minutes to review this, Mr. Buwer, but let me ask you the question. The one proposed CPA 2020-11...
May I provide some historical context to that?
Yeah, we're talking about deleting the freight mobility policy there, and then 2020-12, we're going to revise an existing freight mobility policy. We're either going to delete it or revise it. I'm not sure we're doing both.
On T 18.4, that specific policy came about back in 2000, when at that point in time, the use of the rail line through the Lakeview area, and that's part of Tacoma, Lakewood, was not being used whatsoever, very limited. So at that time, it was considered to be a underutilized rail line, and could we use it, or would we want to use it for something else? And so Mr. Branstadter is suggesting that it be deleted in its entirety, and given the current circumstances and the use of the rail, my first blush is that makes sense.
Okay. And then we're going to talk about revising it under T 18.6?
T 18.6 is a separate policy.
Mm-hmm.
Under the freight rail mobility, and it just adds some additional language that includes Joint Base Lewis McCord.
Got it. Okay.
Very minor, but reasonable.
No problem. That was all the questions I had. Thanks.
Further discussion? Call for the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. We now move to resolution number 2019-22 amended. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now move to public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on 18A land use and development code updates.
This, we have Mr. Buwer.
Good evening again. Just a moment here. I have a, a brief PowerPoint slide presentation. I won't go through all of it, since the council is, I assume, is pretty aware of what the action is this evening. But then, this is again, an amendment to various sections of your development code, as well as other sections of the municipal code, to basically clean up and make the current development regulations more readable. And if you start looking at all of the amendments, it's 1, 3, 12, 17, 18B, and 18A, and the majority of the amendments are in 18A. The summary of the code amendments, we are basically taking and removing 18A and providing for a new 18A, which is our land use and development code. Amendments to Title I general provisions, that's specifically in reference to some of the hearing examiner requirements that we're trying to make sure are consistent with 18A. Title III is revenue and finance, and there we move some of the financial instruments, bond measurements, or bonds and guarantees of that nature, financial guarantees, out of 18A and placed it in Title III. Title XII has to do with site development regulations, and as I recall, one of the major amendments there was to move trees, all of the tree discussion, tree standards and the like, and street trees to 18A in one section. And then amendments to the subdivision code. There's also a whole series of Scrivener and cross-referencing corrections. They're listed in this presentation. I won't go to all of them. We continue to find them as we use this new revised code. Public outreach, we had had a dedicated website. We've also had ongoing information in the city manager's weekly bulletin. We've had mailings to stakeholders and trade associations, private and for-profit organizations. You will likely hear some testimony from them this evening. We've had three stakeholder public in-person meetings where we met with major property owners and walked through the revised development code to see if it would work for them or not, and were we inadvertently creating any non-conforming uses. Our intent was not to do that, and I think we've done a pretty good job in that effort. We've had multi-in-person and conference call meetings with individual stakeholders. We've had outreach to Joint Base Lewis McCord regarding outdoor lighting and the ACUs, air installation compatible use zone, and military compatible zoning code amendments. And the planning commission also conducted a hearing on September 4th, 2019. The planning commission action began sort of mid-2019. They had eight meetings. Public hearing was opened on September 18 through October 16. Numerous amendments to the first draft were made by, by the commission and also on the part of stakeholder recommendations, and from time to time, we continue to still hear from stakeholder about minor amendments. The changes are listed here. 1.36 has to do with the hearing examiner system. Chapter 3.80 is financial guarantees. Street trees is to be regulated in 18A, and the list of street trees are to be codified as part of a low-impact development manual. On the left is the current structure of 18A. On the right is the new structure of 18A. We've divided it out a little differently in hopes of trying to improve clarity and readability. This is something that you've seen before. This is a chart which shows whether or not substantive amendments have been made to Title 18A and what they were. You have 18A10, 18A20 administration. Under this section, concerted effort was made to make it easier... Under this section, concerted effort was made to make it easier for people to understand how projects are approved. And if they're not approved, what is the appeal process and what are your specific private property rights? Discretionary permits, we've added the comprehensive plan procedures and also site-specific rezones. We've gotten rid of minor variances and we also added a list of unusual uses section. And that has to do with things that pop up that don't really fit the code that provide us an avenue to review. Other ones, eighteen A forty, land use and interpretation tables. This is the most substantive area and this is an effort on the city staff's part to improve readability. We are getting more and more requests from developers wanting to know what the new code will look like, and by and large, we're finding out that they seem to like it. Overlay districts, we removed the riparian overlay requirements and the three overlay districts remain the same. The site planning regulations under eighteen A sixty are pretty much the same, although we have added FAR regulations within the clear, the North Clear in Air Corridor One and Air Corridor Two, outdoor lighting code, and new gated residential subdivision section. Under eighteen A seventy is community design, landscaping, and tree preservation. The only thing that's major is the new tree fund. And eighteen A eighty is parking, and there we rewrote that to provide a whole variety of cleanups to improve readability, but also to provide for additional opportunities to reduce parking if a project can meet certain criteria. And that really includes my presentation this evening. This is a topic that's been before the City Council on numerous occasions, and I believe there are people in the audience who would like to provide some public testimony. So, Mr. Mayor, I return it back to the council.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions from Mr. Buwer at this time? Now move to public testimony. This is when any member of the public may speak to the issue at hand, which is eighteen A land use and development code updates. This is very similar to the public comment section. You'll have three minutes to speak. Yellow light comes on at thirty seconds as a warning. Red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city. The difference, however, is that the topic's limited to eighteen A land use and development code updates. First person who signed up to speak is Mr. Dennis Howden.
Land use, land planning, and this date, I think of glug, 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 glug. Because the process, when it needs to be changed to grab opportunity, is too slow. The entire, I've driven, you know, I just did five thousand miles, stopping in towns everywhere. When opportunity comes, you gotta be fast and you can't do it. You gotta do state on one side and you got all kinds of restrictions and, you know, people are laughing at the West Coast, you know? Then your land use, does it cover tents? Huh? Does it cover living on the street? Probably doesn't. And that's going to be a growing problem because your politicians incentivize it. They don't have it everywhere in the United States and don't ever let a politician say, oh, it's all over the United States. It's not. It's a characteristic of places like Seattle and it grows from there out into the suburbs, San Francisco, Los Angeles, start looking like the inside of a Santa Can. These are things you got, you got a big fight on your hands. You got a huge fight if you're going to compete. The whole United States is very happy with having more jobs, more pay, clean places to live, reasonably cost housing. You're on your, you're totally out of it. If you're on this side of the mountains, you're completely out of it. You're overpriced in every way, you're overregulated, and there's not a leader that I can see that can confront this honestly and lead the way out of it. Because most people, there just isn't anyone around that can explain it, like a Donald Trump or Nikki Haley or a Candace Owens. It takes a leader. He might get you mad, but it takes a leader that'll look you in the eye and tell you what you need to do. And what you're doing, this is too slow. What if, what if he needs, what if you got ten acres here and a great opportunity comes and he needs twelve? How long's it going to take you to change? He's going to give you probably thirty days and he's out of here. You're not going to sit there and look at huge amounts of books, then look at your taxes, look at your regulations. This state's got to wake up or you're going to sink.
Next person who signed up to speak is Gregory Birch.
My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. And Wireless Policy Group's offices are in Issaquah, Washington. So I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Mayor for the chance to speak tonight. This has been a very long and involved process. I've been here since the Planning Commission took it up in the middle of the year, and I'm happy to see it come this far. The attention to detail, given the large amount of code update, code's been updated over the last five or six months, is very impressive. And I'd like to thank staff for all their efforts and energy that's gone into this. And in particular, Tiffany Spear has been keeping myself updated as the schedules have changed and as everything has been brought in so we can hopefully have it tucked away by the end of the year. I understand that's the goal so far, and it would be exciting to get a chance to wrap that up before 2020. In the vein of attention to detail, my colleague noticed that there is, there are a few typographical errors in the packets, one of which is on page five hundred and forty-five of tonight's packet, which is, there was a distance measurement called out fifty feet, but then it's in parentheses, five hundred feet. So that kind of, that kind of thing, I think, has been pointed out in email with staff. And before the final version of the code goes live, I'm sure those can be addressed. But ultimately, I guess I'm here to say, I'm here to answer any questions you have about wireless industry, but it sounds like this has been worked over very well and since the only comments I have are minor typographical errors. I'm happy to say that it's nice to see this come as far as it has. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who's signed up to speak is Mr. James Guerrero.
James Guerrero, I live in Lakewood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing me to speak here. So I'm on the Planning Commission. As was mentioned, we had this come before us eight times. We had a really great process, I think. I would really commend the staff. I think they did a great job keeping us on track and identifying the changes they were making and having a, and responding to our comments. We brought several comments to them, they responded, and I think we came up with a place that we, as the Planning Commission, were happy with. And so I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, but otherwise, I'd say I think the process went really well.
Thank you, but this is a time for testimony as opposed to interrogatory, so.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Next person scheduled to speak is Tim Purrier.
I'm Tim Purrier. I'm representing the Lakewood Industrial Park. My office is in Lakewood. The Lakewood Industrial Park is two point four million square feet of industrial property developed in the IBP Industrial Business Park Code, our zone. And in that park, we have about a hundred tenant spaces. So this section of the code is very important to me, to do my job, because when new tenants, new businesses want to come to the city of Lakewood, I'm the first screen to tell them, are they in the right place? How do they fit into the city of Lakewood? Where do they need to get a business at? And the existing code as it's drafted is difficult to understand. So this is a huge step forward for the city. I think it's going to be a great benefit to the city going forward. And I just want to compliment the staff on creating five hundred pages of new text. I don't know how you do that. I would like to say that I have looked, spent most of my time looking at the IBP code and the, comparing the original language that is in the current code to the proposed code, the uses are still the same. It's just very streamlined and much easier to read. So it's going to be much better. The one section of code that I have looked at that was a little troubling to me was the lighting code, because that was kind of dictated by the Department of Defense, I think. And they've done some things that I wouldn't do if I were writing the code. Basically, they picked a standard, the bug standard, I don't know if you've gotten to the detail that far of how to interpret uplighting. It's not a universally accepted standard. So when you go out to buy your light fixtures, not all the light fixtures have the bug standard on them. We've brought this forward to staff, and I think we've added language into this code that allows staff to say that even though the code says you should meet a bug standard, there are equivalencies that they can look at to allow other uses that would be required. And the same thing goes, there's another standard. You can only have your lights so high if they're on the building, but you, it's unlimited. You put them on a pole, what's the difference, kind of? You know? I don't know why they did that. But again, that's a standard that I think we can adjust with. So, you know, finally, the comment, last comment I'd like to close with is that the errors and little changes, there's a bunch of, five hundred pages, there's going to be a bunch of little problems that crop up. And as an example, one of the things that we identified was a typo in parking for industrial parks. The standard right now is one space for two thousand feet. In the first draft, it's been corrected a long time ago, it was one space for one thousand feet. That means you need twice as much parking as any other city in Pierce County for your industrial. That would be a problem. Hopefully, the city or the stat, can direct the staff to make sure that we have an expedited solution for these type of problems so that if a standard like that comes up, it doesn't bog down the permits for these, for, these first people are going to be the guinea pigs to get this through. And I'd really hate to see those people, their projects slowed down just because the code says they have to have twice as much parking as everybody knows they should. There should be a quick solution, you know, a methodology so that we can get that pushed through or not delay their permits or something like that. That would be my only suggestion, because I just see that issue potentially slowing permits down, and I don't want the city of Lakewood to lose their great recommend, their great, the industry thinks this is a good city to develop in, and I don't want us to get a strike against our name just because of some little problems with this code translation. So that's it. This is a great change. Looking forward to the change. Thank you to everybody.
It's all the people who've signed up, but it does not mean that you can't testify on the issue. If anyone else wishes to speak on eighteen A land use and development code violation, or code updates, please step forward to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name's Davendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. This new technology is vital in addressing the coverage and capacity issues that Verizon customers have within the city of Lakewood. More people are using more devices in more places to do more things than ever before. And as a result, wireless data usage has increased dramatically since the introduction of the iPhone. And so Verizon appreciates the opportunity to provide feedback to the city staff and commend the city staff in creating a good and workable and federally compliant code for the city of Lakewood. So Verizon supports the direction and the language of tonight's draft code. We also thank the city staff for their efforts. We look forward to a continued partnership with the city of Lakewood to providing the residents, the visitors and businesses of Lakewood with the service that they have come to expect. Thank you so much for your time and all your efforts.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Does anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Hearing now, I declare the public hearing closed. I'd like to thank you for your input. It's nice to get thoughtful, constructive input on technical subjects. And we now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business to come before the council?
No, sir.
Then we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Got four updates that we'd like to provide you this evening. First off, I'd like to call up Ms. Tara Kraus, our Assistant City Manager for Administrative Services, to give an update on a new GASB rule.
So on an annual basis, it seems like there's always changes in how we do our financial reporting. The latest one is GASB eighty-four, which requires us to report fiduciary funds in a different manner. And so fiduciary funds are really monies that the city is holding and it's going to be remitted to another party. And so we just need to have a fund that is set up to take in those monies. And it's basically a balance sheet account, so there would be no budgetary impact or budgetary items that need to be included in an ordinance. So this item here is scheduled for the City Council Consent Agenda on December sixteenth. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Mr. Whalen.
So I forget the name of the agency that we're going to be taking funds as kind of an intermediary, for I know Lakewood's Promise might be one, is that right?
There, it's, it's very simplistic in this email, but there is an evaluation process. And so that evaluation process is this big massive flow chart. So I've come up with some items where I've gone through the test and determined that there are items that need to be reported in this fiduciary. I'd have to do the same for the Lakewood's Promise money or any other type of monies that come in.
Okay. What's a good example that comes to mind?
Sure. So like municipal court, the contract revenues that we take in, and then we remit to them on a monthly basis, that would be something. Lease hold tax, monies that we're holding for the state, we're collecting that money, but it needs to be remitted to the state. Any of those excise tax types of things, or monies that we're deducting from employees' payroll to contribute towards like an FSA or some other third party. It could also, now this is where it gets really, really complicated, is we could seize cash, and if that cash is being held pending some trial, because it's in the form of cash, has to be reported in a fiduciary fund, whereas if it was not cash, it could be reported in another fund. So there's a, there's a test that, you know, we have to go through a few different series, and I've just completed the ones that I'm aware of that are on our books.
I assume there'd be lots of different sub-accounts within that fund for the various?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Kraus? Well, thank you. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to invite Shannon Kelly-Fong, our Senior Policy Analyst, to give an update on an opportunity that we have regarding our partnership for emergency management services between the city and West Pierce Fire and Rescue.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm joined here tonight by Assistant Police Chief John Umfred, and we're here to provide an update on the interlocal agreement for the expansion of West Pierce Fire and Rescue, the emergency management services that would include the cities of Lakewood as well as the city of University Place. This was previously brought before the City Council at a study session in June two thousand and nineteen. To summarize the information presented in the memo, extending the district's emergency management services to include Lakewood as well as University Place would allow for greater uniformity of emergency management services, increased operational efficiencies, increased local control, and decreased costs for all parties involved. In the table, or, excuse me, in the memo, if you go to Table A, it provides the ILA's proposed financial responsibilities for Lakewood and University Place. Concerning personnel, the district is currently considering Option Three, which is adding a point three three full-time employee emergency management assistant to their emergency management personnel. And you can see that in Table B, which provides a breakdown of all of the options that are being considered. So the ILA would So the ILA would allow for additional part-time emergency management assistant if it was unanimously agreed upon by the joint board. And the joint board would consist of the city manager of Lakewood, the city manager of University Place, and the fire chief of the district per the ILA. University Place Council did an initial review on the ILA on November 18th, 2019, and it is scheduled for consideration for adoption this evening at their meeting. And the district can enter the ILA at any time. The recommendation is to adopt the proposed ILA, and this could occur at the regular city council meeting, which is scheduled for January 6th, 2020. This is the end of our updates. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Kelly-Fong. Mr. Branstadter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I merely wanted to clarify that the recommendation to act on January 6th as opposed to December 16th, was that predicated by the fact that historically we wouldn't have had a meeting on December 16th? Were we not deciding to do that for 18A because it's typically been a meeting we didn't have? And is there any roadblock to considering the ILA on December 16th so that it can actually become effective January 1st instead of having to wait a month following the approval by the other two entities?
To my knowledge, I'm not sure why January 6th specifically, however, it could be adopted at the next regular council meeting, which would be in December 16th, correct?
I think, and Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we could put this on our consent agenda for December 16th.
Anyone have any objection? Oh, and I would note that when Mr. Branstadter and I participated, others from Lakewood participated in grant-funded training in Emmitsburg, Assistant Chief Umfrid was there if I recall correctly, or had been there before. Our drill was actually a train derailment and oil train fire in University Place. And it seemed that it was pretty obvious that when the emergency came, municipal boundary didn't mean too much, and we're joined at the hip. So this makes a lot of sense, I think, from an operational standpoint, if nothing else. So if there's no objection from council, we'll put that on the consent agenda for the 16th. Thank you.
Just like to add, we're also hopeful that perhaps the town of Silicon can join us sometime in 2020 as well. Next up is Mr. Dave Buhr, our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, who's going to provide an update on the status of our abatement program for 2019. So on one hand, you know, his department is responsible for growing the city and creating new buildings and activities and such, however, he's also responsible for eliminating certain blights and the like. And so that's what you'll hear from him now.
Give it and take it away.
I begin this presentation with this one little sign that was standing on a brick wall, "Commit No Nuisance." And I thought it was kind of trite, yet something that we're trying to fix in the city of Lakewood. This is really a report not only by the Community Development Department, but also by CSRT. I need to reference them more often when we do these abatements and public nuisances because they play a major role in completion of some of these assignments. Our discussion items this evening is a brief review of authorities, a history of abatement nuisance activity from 2015 to 18, talking about the number of completed abatements, the average age of structures. I wanted to include that because I found that to be interesting. The cleanup actions taken by the city versus that of the private property owner. In 2019, we found some interesting information where the private property owners are doing more than they have in the past. And then a brief review of revenues and expenditures from 2007 to 2018. I also wanted to briefly speak about program changes, trying to improve performance tracking, a minor adjustment in how we approach the structure of assignments, performing more nuisance actions than in previous years, and I suspect that we will continue to do this in 2020, and the fact that we have a new building official. Also, too, a review of 2019 abatement actions, lessons learned this year, and some before and afters. Your authorities are basically in Chapter 3580 RCW, which authorizes cities and counties to adopt ordinances to regulate and abate unfit dwellings, buildings, and structures. We'll talk about what abate means in a few minutes. And then your local municipal code, Chapter 1505, which is your building codes, predominantly your international building code and international property maintenance code. Some cities do not adopt the international property maintenance code, but the city of Lakewood does. Our program statistics, this is from 2015 to 2018. The second descriptor, number of abatement/nuisances completed by city and property owner, that should be just city. In 2015, you see 16, 15, 15, and 2018, we see 32. And during this time period, 78 actions that have been initiated in the city of Lakewood throughout the community. The next line talks about the number of abatements and nuisances performed by the property owner, and they vary from year to year, but on average, it's about 50%. And then the average age of structure in years, we're dealing with older buildings that have not been maintained. And so this is what this is showing you, and I thought it was an important piece of information that the council would want to be aware of. History of abatement nuisance activity, this is your revenues from 2015, starting with total revenues of $37,500 to a current revenue picture of $542,897. Half of that is abatement charges from other actions involving abatements that have been performed in previous years. And then you see the expenditures of $150,000, $74,000, $186,000, and $222,000. Right now, at the end of 2018, I don't have the numbers for 2019 yet, you have about $465,000 in the pool to pull from for abatement activity. I'll get to 2019 in a moment, which is kind of interesting because we didn't expect this to happen as far as numbers. Program changes, we're attempting to use Smartsheet to track the abatements and public nuisances. That talks about what Smartsheet is. It's basically a program software that helps manages the work across departments. We're still learning how to use it, and we need to make some adopt amendments to its processes, but it's, I think, a big change in how we do things in the future. We also no longer use the terms active projects and pending projects because it sort of means that if you're a pending project, it kind of sits to the side, and we'll take it up, and we have time to get to the next one. We're doing away with those terms and instead using first-tier assignments and second-tier assignments. The first-tier assignments are the ones that are the dangerous buildings and the most serious public concern. That goes straight to the Community Economic Development Department. The second-tier assignments stay with the NPOs and CEOs, community enforcement officers and neighborhood patrol officers. And what we're trying to do is start working the second-tier assignments so that they don't become first-tier assignments. And here, we're trying to work with property owners for them to take more responsibility and clean up their properties. To do that, they often will issue infractions, they'll meet with property owners on a very regular basis. There's a lot of conjoling going on and a lot of public, initial contact, but it seems to be working to take care of some of these lesser assignments so they don't become bigger problems later. I want to talk about public nuisance because we're doing more of them. A public nuisance involves an unreasonable or unlawful use of property that results in material annoyance, inconvenience, discomfort, or injury to another person or to the public. It may involve something such as piling of garbage on residential property or failing to do something. Common nuisances include the accumulation of junk, animals, noise, dangerous buildings, sewage, and unsanitary conditions, and encroachments into the public right of way, which we have all of those. Nuisances can be remedied by abatement, and the words "abate" and "abatement" are legal terms used to describe the process to putting an end to or terminating the nuisance. Number of nuisance projects in 2019, 14. That's a large increase over previous years. And the types of nuisances that we see most often is junk and inoperable vehicles and residential zones. And this continues to be a blight upon certain neighborhoods, and there's fairly extensive action taken throughout the city of Lakewood to address this. A new sheriff in town, that's a cute way of saying we have a new building official. He started on July 1, 2019, and immediate assignments dealing with some of our most difficult projects that we have on hand. It's an important role, I wanted just to review it briefly, that the building official establishes the administrative record along with the program manager, Mr. Gum. He approves the notices and complaint. He's the hearing officer on the notice and complaint process, and ultimately, if things work out, he's the person that allows the issuance of the building permits. So this is an important role for the city of Lakewood, and Mr., our building official, Rafiq Gindi, I think has done a very admirable job dealing with some very difficult assignments. 2019 abatement activity, surprise, surprise, we upped our game a little bit, and we have right now 57 active cases. Number of first-tier actions is 30, number of second-tier actions is 27. I want to go back to that first one, 57 cases. It says five properties with bad addresses. That's a continuing issue that we have in the city of Lakewood, trying to get the right addresses on the right property. It seems like something that's real minor, but to us, trying to make sure we're going on the right property and taking the appropriate action is very important. Of the 57 cases, 25 have been closed. The first-tier cases closed are 10, and the second-tier cases 15. The number of abatements completed by property owners this year is 24 with an exclamation mark. I never thought we would see that number. Now, that can change from year to year, but I'm hoping to think that the words getting out, and when you're contacted by the city, you need to address it. The number of abatement actions completed by the city is only one as of November 21st, and our city expenditures today are roughly $34,000, which is much less than in previous years. I won't say that we're turning the curve yet, but I think we're very close. This is the 2019 abatements and public nuisance locations. You see the first-tier assignments, and you see second-tier. They're basically dispersed throughout the city of Lakewood except in certain neighborhoods. In the Oakbrook neighborhood, we don't have that many. And also, on the western reaches of the city of Lakewood, west of Lake Silicon and some of our established neighborhoods, you don't see that many as well. But elsewhere in the older parts of the city, you're seeing this action being taking place. These are the completed projects for the year. Again, scattered throughout the city of Lakewood, we continue to do a lot of work in Silicon and in the Woodbrook neighborhood. I will also tell you that the report that we have before you is outdated in the sense that Mr. Gum has moved forward with some additional projects in the Woodbrook neighborhood, and I'm expecting some additional demolitions by the end of the year. And that's to bring about some additional industrial warehouse development. This year's lessons, four abatement projects, a large commercial building, a vacant commercial restaurant that was subject to a fire, and a 38-unit mobile home park have significantly impacted our workflow. And it wasn't until we got through some of the hearings in the fall where we were able to again pick up the slack and move forward with some of our projects. Turning a new building official in the middle of several ongoing abatement actions has been a challenging assignment, so I think we've been successful. The internal coordination between the departments has been very good, and I really wish to compliment the police department and the legal department because we would not be this far along without their assistance. External coordination with utility companies has improved. Coordination with the county health department, specific to septic system failures, remains challenging, and it has slowed some of our abatement actions in one existing mobile home park. Property owners seem to be getting the message, there's a much higher level of compliance. We are proposing some better implementation systems in the coming year. And then I just wish to point out to the council that we have ongoing issues with recreational vehicles being used for temporary housing. When they'll set up shop on a residential street or industrial area, this continues to be a frustration for both community development and CSRT. We actively work these cases, but it's a struggle. Some before and afters, this is at 6408 Silicon Boulevard. This was a result of some complaints from its existing residential neighborhoods. This action was something that took place through the code enforcement officer's actions. This is another one, this is in the Lakeview neighborhood. On the right, you see an old tired house with a lot of junk and vehicle equipment and parts, and a pickup truck that was being worked on. And on the right, you see that the property has been cleaned up. There was actually permits pulled to do work on the interior, and you actually can see some grass where before a good portion of the front yard was used for vehicle parking. This next one is also found in generally the Lakeview neighborhood. This is a longstanding issue with a tenant and a private property owner who lived out of state. There were some issues with the police department, but also with social services. Ultimately, those issues were resolved, and the property owner came in and made some improvements, and that's what you see on the right. So that's a very brief overview of our abatement program this year. It's, again, very popular with the property owners. They love it. We will continue to move forward to see if we can improve our operations and implement better systems to do more in coming years. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Buhr?
No questions.
Mr. Whelan.
Well, number one, accolades and wild applause for the work. I think it's something the neighbors and all of us want to see happen. I guess my question to you is, from your perspective and looking at your photographs, the befores and afters, I can't help but notice a significant time difference between the before picture and the after picture. What are we doing to best consolidate the time that we take from identification to resolution?
Well, first of all, it's better tracking these, you know. I think sometimes the code enforcement officers get so busy with so many cases that they're going in all these different directions. So we're trying to change that by making sure that we have maintaining a first-tier and second-tier list, and then focusing on those particular issues. But the other piece, many of the ones that you've seen in the pictures were public nuisances. And while we've done more public nuisances in 2019, I think that's going to be a focal point in 2020 to hit up a lot of these properties with these problems. The other one that we have issues with is hoarder houses. And that gets into some mental health issues that really make this even more difficult. Many of these abatement projects, and particularly public nuisance, it's a combination of property maintenance and mental health.
And then looking at your slide on the history of the revenues and expenditures, I know going, it looks like the ending fund balance in 18 was about $464,000. Any clue where we are in 19, or did I miss that?
Well, if we've only spent $34,000?
That's it, huh?
That's it. So we have a good size of chunk of money available for performing abatements. One thing I will point out is we continue to relocate people in one mobile home park because of septic system failures. There's action pending on that mobile home park. Now, while we are spending abatement funds to fix that, we will be suing the property owner here upon the closure of some other actions to recoup our funds. And the longer this goes, the more money he owes the city of Lakewood. But that continues to be an issue, and the mobile home parks will be something that we will be working on for a long time. Some park owners are very good, other park owners are not, and you've seen some of that in the newspapers of late.
As a follow-on to that, with respect to mobile home parks and septic system, some weeks ago, I believe, I signed off on a rather strong letter on behalf of the city to the health department, to which, to my knowledge, there's been no response, at least not to Has there been any change in their lack of activity with respect to enforcement on failed septic system?
We have to call We have to call numerous times, leave messages, telephone calls, make personal contacts to see if we can get them to move forward. It's been slow, but we have seen some action. It's not what we'd like to see.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this report. I really, I have to kowtow on what the deputy mayor said, this is very good work. I also want to ask another question to sort of move a little further with Mr. Whalen's line of questioning, though. You mentioned you have a lot of work, that these officers, these folks out on the street, they are busy. Do we need to consider hiring a few more folks to close the time gap? Because I noticed the same thing with the photos, I mean, one could be 2017 and 2019. Do we need to think about hiring an FTE or two to close that time gap?
The city council has allowed the community development department to hire another person who works between half-time rental housing and also for public nuisance abatement. So that did take place within the last year, that position expires next year, so there has been some additional staff at the community development level. There's been an ongoing discussion regarding the CSRT capacity, and I'll leave it there for now, but likely that could potentially be a budget issue in the upcoming budget process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks again for coordinating this fine work, where it's probably one of the most popular programs that the city of Lakewood has. It's interesting that that goes along with parks and police, it's tearing things down, or at least fixing them up, so thanks again. Back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, I'd like to invite our police chief, Mike Zarro, to give an update on an interlocal agreement that we have with the Drug Enforcement Administration.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, council members. The interlocal agreement that I'm bringing forward is with TNET. It's a task force that we've been a part of for several years, and this is actually just an updated agreement. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we signed on to be a part of TNET, and it was an agreement that dated back to 1986, and it was still the original document. The Department of Justice shortly thereafter came out with new rules related to asset forfeiture, which required a lot more changes to the document, just related to asset forfeiture. And we, as a group, thought it would be a good time just to look at the document in its entirety and just refresh it and make it new, as opposed to the one that was signed when I was in high school. So that's what I have before you, the agreement covers everything from asset forfeiture sharing and the assignment of personnel, and of course indemnification, and it doesn't change anything really significant operationally that we're already doing. We do have one person that's assigned to TNET and has been since you signed the agreement in 2017. That is not a position that's over our budgeted personnel, it's one of the positions that are budgeted from special ops that has been assigned down to TNET. And for those of you that don't remember, or maybe for members of the audience, TNET focuses more on large-scale operations, and they can be anywhere in the county, the state, or even the country. And when I say large-scale, I mean large-scale pounds of narcotics, and in many cases, that comes with stolen firearms en masse, in large quantities. And to include one recently that I think you saw about, that it was a different DEA task force but doing the same type of work, that recovered 26 firearms on a drug warrant, and I think several of those were stolen. So doing a lot of good, large-scale work to kind of combat the drug trafficking trade. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the agreement or the task force itself.
Questions for the chief, Mr. Branstadter.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, within this agreement, which is a continued agreement, that how does this agreement have some controls in it that would preclude some of the concerns that arose with the previous SWAT agreement, with respect to indemnification?
Well, the, it's, the indemnification language is there for everything, and it spells out punitive damages are the responsibility of the individual person's officer's agency or employer. That's something that I, to be part of any task force, honestly, I don't know that we're going to get away from. But all the other indemnification language speaks directly to equal shares among partners.
So within our revised indemnification policy, the last time we revised it, should there be an issue where indemnification is an issue, then we're in the process of internally doing an evaluation to make a determination as to whether the city's going to indemnify a Lakewood individual when there's a potential for that?
That's correct. All the new rules that you put in place related to punitive damages and your decision-making related to that are still in place, this doesn't affect that at all.
Thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Whalen?
Just a quick question on the focus of TNET post-1986. You know, they talk about it is to maintain and enforce criminal laws relating to controlled substances, so the natural question is, well, marijuana is still a controlled substance for federal law purposes. What are we doing with large-scale operations in that arena that may run afoul of the licensing requirements of the state?
There's been, in our participation in TNET in the past few years, in my position on the board, I've not seen any focus at all on marijuana. That's just not the trade that rises to their attention. It's all, either it's been pills, fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamine, and in large amounts. Even though it would, you know, the federal laws related to marijuana are different than local laws, and they certainly could, there's been no focus on that at all that I've seen. If it came up along with something else, then of course, they would include that in whatever work they were doing, they wouldn't just discount it. But to focus, but they're just not focusing on marijuana alone. And being that they fall under the umbrella of the DEA, they're not going to come out with anything formal saying that we won't focus on marijuana.
So if there is a producer that runs afoul of the state liquor and cannabis control board rules and regs, then the state would be the one to deal with it on a licensure standpoint that really hasn't been a need for any sort of investigation or assistance?
Absolutely, at least not from this group, not on what is essentially a federal level.
Okay.
And all the task force operators that are assigned to this are commissioned as federal agents, so it wouldn't rise to their level.
So anecdotally, taking marijuana off for a moment, what's been the trend that the task force is seeing out there in the state of Washington or our region with regard to these large-scale operations?
Well, interestingly, you know, it's kind of like any other commodity, you see ebbs and flows, and currently, methamphetamine is sort of
Vogue?
On the rise, yeah, that's the hot commodity. And the heroin is always still there, but not like it was a couple of years ago, where that's what we're seeing a lot of, methamphetamine. Even given what we hear about the opioid epidemic, meth is still the prevalent drug in our region.
So how do you see that impacting Lakewood? Do you see it more in the individual users, or the crime stance where people are kind of chasing property in order to fund their habit? How do we see it manifest here at the smaller level, obviously, than the task force level?
A lot of it is the property crimes that are committed in order to pay for the methamphetamine, or the behaviors that arise out of being under the influence of meth. There's some people that really just, they lose all sense of reality, and they're out in the public, and that's what we see. And I'll, you know, to, kind of along those lines as well, I had a meeting with Greater Lakes last week to talk about the number of people that are coming in crisis, just walking in the doors there. And anecdotally, they said that they're seeing a significant number that are coming in where the cause of their crisis is meth use. So, and that's not something we would necessarily see as criminal behavior, but it's something that they are certainly feeling is the impact of meth in our region.
Also, anecdotally, I've heard that more people are showing up at the medical examiner's office as a result of methamphetamines and opioids. As in?
Not going back out yet.
Yeah. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much. I just, on an unrelated note, but with respect to your department, I happened to run into Detective Martin coming out of the prosecutor's office last week, and I understand that you're very aptly wrapping up some homicide investigations in a timely manner, and want to commend the department for the good work that it's
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Our detectives and officers have been doing some outstanding police work, it's been good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Caulfield?
A few more items, if I might, Mayor. On your, on the dais this morning, is, I'm sorry, this evening, is a letter to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency regarding their proposal for a clean fuel standard. I know we talked about this the last couple of meetings, and the gist of the letter is that we oppose that, and so it's there for your review. Certainly, if you have any feedback, comments, suggestions, we can do that, otherwise, we'd like to get it off to them. And by the way, as a part of the questions that we have in there, they are required to actually address those and answer those before the board takes action.
So I was going to do this a public comment, but since you brought it up here, I have reviewed this, I find it well done, I agree with the tenor, with the exception of the ending, which personally, I would like to see be a little stronger, because I frankly think that the agency's actions are outrageous. And so, subject to input from my fellow council members, I would add at the end, after the sentence, it says, "The city of Lakewood requests that PSCAA board reject this proposed rule, add the sentences. It is a worst-case example of regulatory overreach. Adoption would be the very antithesis of democratic government."
You plagiarized me.
No.
Because that's the kind of stuff that I would write. May I speak to that since you asked?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like every word you said, however, the writer, and I assume that was you, Mr. Caulfield?
No, it was actually Ms. Tiffany Spear.
Okay. She has made it clear throughout this letter exactly what you were saying at the end, and I think, and this sounds so unlike me to say this, we are leaving the door open for a discussion with this board with the ending that we have currently. If we, in all due respect, use the ending you have, I think we've kind of slammed that door shut.
I would agree, but I don't think the door is open now. There's a five-member board, and we have to get it to 3-2. If it isn't, there's going to be litigation. I mean, that's where we are now. This is more for the public and the press. Mr. Branstadter?
Well, you know, with respect to the ending and going on, I would at least make a change and say, at least change the word "request" that the PCS, SCAA board reject the proposal, at least change it to something more stronger than "request," like, at least as far as "recommend" or "urges," you know, "request" is probably the least strong action statement you could make. But I also, the body of the letter is fine, and if the mayor wishes to tweak the closing, I'm fine with that, he has to sign it.
Mr. Whalen?
My only addition to this is I think, Mr. Caulfield, when you and I attended the EDB meeting with the county executive, kind of going through the synopsis, there was a document perhaps produced by PSCAA for the discussion purposes, and I think the back page had a chart that reflected their own internal review of the economic impact of this proposed regulation, including incredibly lopsided impact that it had on Pierce County as opposed to the other counties, I think to the tune of like $371 annually in economic impact, negative economic impact. So to me, as one of the largest cities in Pierce County, I think it would be helpful to add a paragraph, you know, maybe toward the end, you know, notwithstanding the fact that it's an overreach beyond its authority, but the proposed rule egregiously impacts Pierce County and its member cities such as Lakewood, and I don't think that that can be ignored. I mean, it makes no sense to me that they can ignore completely lopsided economic impact, even if they're well within their regulatory authority, which we know they're, or we believe they're not, so I would add that.
Mr. Simpson?
Factually, as long as it's factual, we got to make sure we pull off their own data.
Just a question. I have to assume that Mr. Roberts is a well-informed individual, and that he knows, and it goes to what you were saying, Deputy Mayor. How is it that an organization like this, and this appears to me the way we've written this, that we think they have willfully overstepped their bounds? How is it that they can do that and think that a body like this one would not speak up?
So
More questions?
This is staff-driven.
Yep.
There has been no board action. The board did not direct this to take place. The director of the agency and staff members initiated this proposal in response to the rejection by both the legislature and the voters of their grand plan. So they push it forward, they were confronted by third parties and said, "You can't do this," and they said, "Yes, we can, we're just proposing a rule, we're not adopting a rule," so we can do it totally at the staff level.
So this letter will go to those directors and not to the staff?
Correct.
Then why not leave the door open at the end?
Because it's a 3-2 deal, there are a couple of true believers on
All right, okay, I understand.
So it's going to come down to a swing vote and then litigation.
I see.
So, Mayor, I hear three adjustments. One is council member Branstadter revisiting the word "request" and maybe "urges" or something stronger. The second is a paragraph or a sentence or two regarding the negative impact on not just Pierce County, but Lakewood as a whole, well, actually Lakewood, but Pierce County as a whole, because that's the number that they have. And then, lastly, Mayor, your closing comments, which I understand you have written up there, so if I could get those after the meeting, that would be fantastic.
Yes.
Okay.
Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been working with Camp Marie on some annexation options, as well as boat launch improvements down at the waterfront there, and cautiously optimistic that perhaps we'll have some kind of a preliminary report on this sometime in first quarter of 2020. Also, you know, the winter is almost upon us, however, winter weather is not yet here, it's been very, very dry. As a matter of fact, we haven't even, or it hasn't really gotten that cold, and we haven't had any ice. As a matter of fact, we haven't had to put the deicer out there, so if you haven't noticed those three stripes of deicer out there, the reason being is because it's been really, really dry. So knock on wood, I hope that is how it's going to be through the rest of these winter months, but we all know that that's not how it's going to be. Do want to let you know, our operations and maintenance crew is standing by and ready to address whatever nasty winter weather comes upon us. As a matter of fact, our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, recently did a video of who and what they are and the type of equipment that we have, as well as putting together as well as putting together some winter tips that people can follow when the weather gets a little nasty, as well as the resources that we have, coupled with our map that we have in the event that we get some snow, snow, snow and ice. And so, look for that to come out here in the very near future. I would like to point out, for a city of our size, we are actually very well-equipped in that we have seven large plows. We have three plows that are loaded up on large dump trucks, which also have sanders, and then we have four plows that are loaded up on one tons that also have, actually, sanders and salts. They're called sanders, but we lay down salt because sand just blows to the side of the road, whereas salt actually melts the snow and ice, which is what we want. And then we have a couple of smaller vehicles, as well as a de-icer out there. So, we are, we are well-equipped to, to handle, you know, most snow and ice events that we have here in the Pacific Northwest, so just wanted to give you an update on that. Segue in off with the great police work that our police department does, did want to mention that one of our officers last night, Matthew Letgeb, was just kind of doing a regular security check and was over at Lowe's, and caught in the act an individual photographing his newly-finished, what he described as artwork, which we describe as graffiti and vandalism. And he had just tagged it, and he was taking pictures of it. Long story short, he was caught with the goods, the pictures. He actually admitted to it. This is the second time this guy has been arrested in the last six months for this. And, but obviously, he's probably doing more out there. And we've arrested at least, made at least five arrests in the last six months in the area of graffiti, so it's something that we've really ramped up to try and, you know, get the word out that, you know, don't come to Lakewood and do this. But at the same time, a lot of these folks are, you know, local Lakewood residents who are out there, who are out there doing it. But just wanted to report on that. That was good police work. It's actually the second time in the last couple of weeks where we've actually caught somebody literally in the act, doing the work and taking pictures of their, of their work. So, same guy, yeah, both times, yeah. And so, on top of that, he had, he had some, some meth, so he was booked for that, as well as malicious mischief. So, just wanted to share that with you. As you know, I'd reported that County Chair and our County Councilmember, Doug Richardson, had secured $35,000 for us for some park improvements. So, Mary Dodsworth has, has recommended that those monies be used for the construction of a new picnic shelter at American Lake Park. That's something that we can get going sooner rather than later because he is on a timeline to try and want to get those monies spent this, this spring or, spring or, or summer. I think you're all aware that a judge in King County has blocked the implementation of Initiative 976. What that means is that the state is going to continue to collect our $20 vehicle license fee. Now, on one hand, we're hearing that they are not going to distribute it to us. They're just going to hold it in escrow because if, if for some reason I-976 is found to be valid, then they have to refund those. We're also hearing that the state actually might distribute the money to us. I'm hoping that that's not the case, but if they do, what we will do is we will hold that in an escrow account, and we will not touch it until this whole issue is, is resolved. And we actually receive this money on a, on a monthly basis. So, just wanted to give you a, give you a heads up on that. From a calendar standpoint, tomorrow evening, I know Deputy Mayor Whalen will be representing the City of Lakewood. The Pierce County is going to have their in-district meeting with, for the sixth district over at the Thornwood Castle, and that kicks off at 5:00 PM. And I know Deputy Mayor, you're going to have an opportunity to say some words. On Wednesday morning, December 4th, from 7:30 to 9:00, over at Clover Park Technical College at the Rotunda, we're going to have our fourth-quarter employee appreciation breakfast, and we'd like to invite you all to come out and partake in that. Again, 07:30 over at Clover Park Technical College. On Thursday, of course, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, you'll have your joint meeting with state legislators from 28th and 29th legislative districts, and we're expecting five. Representative Christine Kilduff will not be able to make it. However, Mayor Anderson and I did meet with her a couple of weeks, or about a month and a half ago now, to review our, our agenda. So, we're expecting the other, the other, the other five. This Saturday morning and into the early afternoon, if you're so inclined, AWC is once again going to be sponsoring their Elected Officials Essentials, which is traditionally geared toward newly-elected officials. So, Councilmember Barth, if you're interested in one last hurrah, it's also for our more, more experienced council members, something to do from 8:30 to 3:00 PM on, on, on a Saturday, and you can just go right down, go right down to Olympia.
Perfect.
Go right down, it'd be perfect, yes. Also, of course, on December 7th, we have our holiday festival, including the Lakewood Parade of Lights, and our 23rd Annual Christmas Tree Lighting, which will be at 5:00 PM. There's also a Jingle Bell Dash, half-mile from Park Lodge Elementary School to City Hall. That kicks off at 3:15. And so, if I was to do that, I'd probably be done about, what, about 5:40, 5:45 or so, yeah. I know the Deputy Mayor will be out there, kind of dragging, dragging me along, dragging me along.
About 3:30.
Yeah. However, the Parade of Lights is also going to kick off at the Park Lodge Elementary School, like it did last year, and then, of course, come to City Hall for, for the Christmas Tree Lighting. And if any of you are interested in riding in one of the vehicles, let myself or the city clerk know, actually preferably the city clerk, and we will find a spot for you in one of the vehicles, being sponsored by Lakewood Ford, so wanted to thank them for doing this. But you will need to be there at 3:30, so you can get in your vehicle, and then the parade starts at 4:00, and then you'll be able to come over, and we'll do the tree lighting at, at, at 5:00 PM.
So, just out of curiosity, why are we doing the Dash at 3:15 if we've got to be there at 3:30?
So, Deputy Mayor, so that is, that is above my pay grade.
Apparently.
I, that is, you know, that's, that's the fun department, the recreation folks.
That is above my pay rate.
And so, so there is some means to their madness. And I think what they expect is that if we're going to participate in the, in the Dash, that they expect us then to dash back to the elementary school to get in the car.
Be quite the dash.
Yes. That's correct. Also, on December 7th, I think you might be aware that the state championship football games is going to be two of them over at Harry Lang Stadium. Two-way champions is going to be a game at 11:00 AM, and then I think the other one is at 3:00. I think Stillicum is one of the teams that made the cut. But we've been working with the Clover Park School District, who in turn has been working with the WIAA to get the word out of where not to go in Lakewood because we're going to have some roads closed, you know, Gravel Lake Drive and such. We're not expecting any major issues or incidents, but again, we've been coordinating with them on that, and again, not expecting any, anything there. I believe the first one is at 11:00 AM, and the second one is at 3:00 PM.
The WIAA website's not easily backed online, actually.
Yeah.
It's run by a bunch of retired football coaches.
So, with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Given that the December 7th and all the activities is the first major community celebration since we rolled out our statement about indigenous peoples and the land in Lakewood and that, is there a, a plan to incorporate that statement somewhere in the day's activities?
We were not. The next time we were planning on rolling that out was actually at the Dr. Martin Luther King Day Event on February 1st.
I want to respond or ask a question about the graffiti gentleman, the Goblin dude. And so, the, the updates you provided indicate that he's been booked with five counts of malicious mischief. Is that a misdemeanor?
It is. Yes, it is, Deputy Mayor. So, that goes through our court.
Say again?
That goes through our court.
So, he goes to Pierce County as opposed to Niskualla or wherever else, even though it's a misdemeanor?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
He was booked into Pierce County on the possession of methamphetamine. Our expectation is that it's not a sufficient amount to really get their attention. It's going to come back to us in the form of a no charges filed by the Pierce County Prosecutor. We have had him on other charges that were just misdemeanors. Malicious mischief is a misdemeanor.
Okay.
The prosecutors in our case, Nick Kehas, who's in-house prosecutor, is working very closely with Pete Johnson from the LPD and others. There's, there's a good closeness there, which we don't typically experience in all our numerous cases. And the real question is, what is the right way to deal with this individual to get him to cut it out?
I've got some suggestions to go ahead.
Yeah. We're, well, we're talking about whether or not work crew could be effective. We've tried jail. He's not a person with a home, so it's the difference between spending the night on the roof of some of the stores at the town center or going to the jail. And as you can imagine, that's not as drastic a choice as it might be for everyone.
Right.
So, we are trying to work through some of that collaboratively and just try to figure out what to do. But as you, you could hear from what the manager reported, this isn't somebody who's particularly good at hiding his crime, and if anything, it sounds like he is under what I would consider to be a misapprehension, that he could be some kind of a misunderstood artist.
Well, maybe we can help him understand it a little bit differently. So, if we've got five counts, and if you add these up, and they exceed, what, $250 for a felony charge, I'd say, let's charge Mr. Goblin in a kind way. I'll use the name, with a felony.
We can certainly talk to the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office about that. We don't have the decision-making authority over a felony.
Okay. So, if he comes back to us for a misdemeanor, because I just got a text from a friend of mine who's been tagged several times, and I sent him Mr. Caulfield's update, and he goes, "That's my guy." I said, "Take a picture of it while I add to the charges" over on 59th and Lake Grove. I think we need to work on required restitution for this guy, that he gets his butt in an orange suit, whether he's got shackles on his feet or not. I want him to scrub that crap off personally. Whether it's a policy we adopt or not, they have got to realize that it has a consequence for real people. And if he needs to have a meeting with the property owners to apologize or to listen to these property owners, tell him how it impacts them and their business, he better get his butt over there. And that needs to be what we tell this judge, and get some teeth into it this time. I'm tired of it, and we need to get it done. I'm just sick of it with this guy or any of these other guys. And unless we take, and take it seriously and do something that makes an impact where these guys are walking around with a toothbrush on their frickin' hands and knees and orange, it won't make the impact.
Right.
And if he doesn't care, then we need to show him that we do.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? We've got a council comments. Move on. Mr. Bulkey?
Hello? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. Youth Council met, only a couple members got there. I think there's some miscommunications, and Cameron's out. So, we met with one of the speakers at the, who will be at the youth summit that they're planning now, and it's actually going to be on a weekday on March 19th, I believe. It was a Thursday. And so, they're working on speakers, and, you know, Ms. Martinez was there, and she's, she's lined up at least two speakers already that I think will be very good. But the youth council's going to have to continue to work on this here in two weeks, when they meet in two weeks. So, that, that's coming together nicely. Looking forward to the tree lighting. Hopefully it won't rain too hard, but it sounds like it's going to rain, or it looks like it's going to rain, but maybe, you know, around here, we can always get breaks between the showers, right? So, and then, just for your information, at Harry Lang, the first game, the 1A game, I think is at noon. It's 1A. It's Linden Christian, the Lynx, for, for those of you, and that's L-Y-N-C-S. Linden Christian Lynx versus Royal. And then we have the 2B game at 4 o'clock, Kalama versus Onalaska. So, those are the two games.
Stilllicum's playing at Puyallup?
Stilllicum's out at Sparks Stadium in Puyallup, and I don't have their, their, who they're playing. They're playing, Sparks is going to have the 3A, 2A, so they're playing Tumwater, actually. So, they're, they'll be out in Sparks. The 4A game, actually, Camas versus Bothell is at Mount Tahoma. So, actually, we have three games in, in the general vicinity. I don't know that any of those people will be, be staying for the evening prior or not, although the Royal people are coming all the way over from Eastern Washington, and they've got, it looks like, the early game. So, we'll see. But, there you go. We're on the map.
I've actually seen Linden Christian play years ago. Mr. Branstadter? This one? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday night, I had the opportunity and a privilege to attend the 6th Annual Operation Turkey Dinner at Pacific Lutheran University for the, all of the new soldiers who had just arrived at JBLM, some of whom I learned were, had just been assigned to 22. So, I took the time to go over and talk to them for a little bit. But it was a nice, it was a nice dinner, which also, by the way, reminds me to, to say that I hope all of you had a very good Thanksgiving. As to Saturday and Sunday, I'm not going to be in town, so I will not be here. Madam City Clerk, I won't need a vehicle or a ride or anything like that. And I, but I also want to say that I, I won't be able to attend your gracious invitation on the 8th, so I will, I will miss that. Thank you. Oh, one other thing.
You're out on the 8th?
Yes, sir. Just to say something about what Deputy Mayor Whalen said, I agree. Sometimes, you know, I look at this, Jason, and I think about it. It's, it's tough love. And if it means a toothbrush in an orange suit on your knees, I say we do it. And I, and the only parallel I can draw is that, you know, in the military, that is one very good way to discipline, because the idea of that discipline is to save your life. So, I, I, I completely take your point, and I agree with that.
Where's EMI when you need it? Mr. Whalen?
Well, I was going to talk about graffiti, but it makes my blood pressure explode, so I'll avoid that one. I think we talked about that. I am going to present tomorrow at the county council, so if you have any tidbits of interest that you want me to share with them, I certainly will. If I can get the handout that we've used for our legislative agenda on Thursday, I'll get a few of those copies, and I'll take them with me, and that would be great. Maybe I'll discuss graffiti with them. On Thursday, we have the legislative meeting here, so I assume we've got all hands on deck on that. Do we have the 28th and the 29th present? Okay.
Five of six.
As I noted, five of the six will be, will be here.
Got it. Okay. So, I'll be on board for that. Other than that, had a good weekend. Hope you all did as well.
So, with respect to the county council meeting at Thornwood tomorrow, are any other council members planning on being there? Mr. Branstadter, you indicated that you might? Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Are you coming, Doug?
I'm, I'm coming. I'm going to do the very, very brief welcome to Lakewood. I was going to introduce anybody who was going to be there and, and punt to Jason to give the spiel. I attended the FAG renewal ceremony in memory of our forefounded officers at, along with Deputy Mayor Whalen and the city manager on the 29th, Blue Steel Coffee. I thought the chief did an exceptional job in his talk. Two matters of substance. You may have seen the city manager's response to my inquiry with respect to GCFI, the imposition of GCFI replacement as part of the rental housing inspection program. I believe that that is a code policy matter to be determined by the council. I am a bit concerned that it has been administratively imposed when we pretty much went out of our way to tell people when we were adopting this, that this is bare wires, leaky plumbing, structural deficiencies, not making your place better. The rationale that was for, for imposing it on staff level was that it, while it isn't in the building code, it is determined by in the building code, it is determined by the building official to be a hazard under, or a danger of some type, under the International Property Maintenance Code. However, if you look at Section 605 of the International Property Maintenance Code, it specifically addresses GFCIs, which are only imposed on an existing building with respect to laundries and pool and spa lighting above a certain voltage. And so I don't believe personally that, that that section, that section implies that it's, it's not a requirement on buildings that were built probably in all cases before 1971, but was kind of a staggered implementation of GFCIs. Not that they're necessarily a bad idea for your own home, but there's also the echo shoe of equity among the various property owners as to imposing it on a limited few because you lost the lottery and you're inspected. So I'm asking this be placed on a steady agenda so that we can delve into that and determine what we want to do as a matter of policy. Secondly, you may have read that the city of Tacoma, although it's done a double take, has a no-tent camping ordinance, which was scheduled to go into, on public property, which was scheduled to go into effect on December 1st, but which they delayed. I had previously asked staff to, that staff draft an ordinance of a similar nature, that you couldn't ha, erect an enclosed structure on public property in Lakewood as a building code matter, as a public safety matter, and you can't see what's going on inside, and that's where a lot of bad things happen. And so I'm concerned that if we don't accelerate that effort, that we may see some migration of people who are dissatisfied with Tacoma's policy and find their way south, and then we have to deal with them. And if we're dealing with them just because they're on public property, the ACLU is going to be all over us, but if we do deal with it as a building code, public safety, we're not necessarily saying you can't be sitting here, but you can't be sitting there in an enclosed structure. It at least gives us another vehicle to enforce our desire not to have encampments in the city of Lakewood. So unless there's some objection, I...
Yeah.
Put it on the 16th.
Put it on the 16th. Accelerate that, please.
Actually, Mayor, if I could recommend, December 23rd, followed by action on December 30th, so Councilmember Barth could be here.
December 30th, a special meeting.
I like it. Yeah, we'll be here.
We'll be here.
Okay, so will I. How about that?
We'll be here just for that. So anything further to come before the council? But I'm adjourned.
So Mary, Sunday, are you able to attend? Good job, man.
If you need any of these, I'm going to be in Hawaii, and next time, ask me before you schedule it, because I...
Mike, are you in?
I'm in. Nancy and I are in. I, I'd have three people there if I was, if I was in town. Probably, maybe five.
Should be available on the street out there on Sunday. Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be pretty easy out there on Sunday.